Good evening, greetings to everyone. I would just like to start by a short prayer. So if I will pray and I just hope everybody can just listen to what I say, okay? Let us pray. We give thanks and praises to the Creator of all things, known by many names. We thank you for giving us this moment. We thank you for all the blessings, great and small. We give thanks to our great and noble ancestors who hoped to uplift our people. Those ancestors, or Kalinawa ancestors, or African ancestors, and our heroes most recently departed. We ask you to continue to walk with us, protect us from all hurt and harm. Let us speak to each other tonight with kindness. Let us use this time wisely, as we... Let us help us to protect the Dominican family far and near, as we learn to heal ourselves. Amen. The question why I am here is that I call this meeting because of what I have experienced for the last seven days. Seven days ago, I went on the radio, or eight days ago, and suggested, or recommended, or gave an idea that one of the ways that I could protest what I consider an immoral and corrupt election process was to recommend to at least twelve Dominicans to nominate themselves, so that Friday last week, the government would not become the government, as simple as that. That's what I did, and that's what I thought I explained I did. And I did that saying that I hoped in the two or three weeks between that date last week, Friday, and December the 6th, that my fellow Dominicans would get further opportunity to demonstrate their disgust, demonstrate their disagreement with something that they had been given called a snap election. And that's all I did. And I considered that an act of protest. Everybody has their right how they protest. And quite interestingly, other people felt the same way, so we had fifteen independent candidates get nominated to push back the process a bit. And I thought I had done my job, because that's what I said I came to do. But like everything else in life, we never know all the consequences of our actions. That's why I'm here tonight, to deal with the consequences of my actions. Because for the last week, all I have been getting is phone calls from some people who have always called me, and some from people I don't know at all. And everybody is telling me, "Oh, they're hearing this, and they're hearing this, and they're not hearing this, and what they're hearing." So I am asking myself, but how come all these people saying they're hearing, they're hearing, and I am the hearing specialist in Dominica as far as I know? And nobody is not checking me? I mean, I'm like, "What's going on? You know, I am the hearing specialist. This is money I lose it because people tell me they're hearing this, and they're not checking me." So I didn't pay that any too much attention at the beginning, but as the week went on, I realized things getting, this thing getting serious. Something I took, I did to stop something I thought was a joke, because I really think it's a joke. I don't see any seriousness in this snap election. And I started to realize that people taking this thing very seriously. They're almost making, going to vote a holy thing, like if they're going to church. And in my view, going to vote, there's nothing holy about that. Actually, there's everything unholy about it, especially in this planned so-called snap election. So as the thing went on, and then I understand, I never heard it myself, and then they start to tell me, "Boy, Doc, it looks like..." Some of the comments were like this. "When you run in, when we start into campaign, how are we not seeing you?" All of this from St. Joseph, and I'm like, "Well, what happened to St. Joseph people?" And Mero, especially Mero. I mean, I lived in St. Joseph and worked. And I say, "Well, what happened to my people? Somebody changed them." How come they want me to go and involve myself in this corrupt and immoral process of this snap election? Why do they want me to go on canvas? Why do they want me to go and campaign? For what? What is the reason I am campaigning? So I started to realize it gets serious, and then as the week went along, I understood that, because I'm not listening to all of this, I'm not listening to radio, because I live in my life, and my life is not about snap elections and campaigning. That's not my life. So, and then I was informed that the Prime Minister was calling my name on his platform again. Again, for what? I'm like, "For what?" And then people started to tell me, "Well, like, it looks like you're scaring the Prime Minister." I said, "Me? How I can scare the Prime Minister?" And I said to him, "Well, if the Prime Minister is upset about me, it's a long time, it's been, what, eight years now, the Prime Minister has been threatening me to make me behave myself, but I don't know how he's going to do that, because I don't know which man on earth can make me behave myself." So he's already lost that war, so I can tell him that. So he's wasting his time and energy. He better go and continue the mass that they have going on, calling the campaign. So, but then I realized, and then somebody said, "Well, the thing that really got me going is when they tell me that the Prime Minister, 'You are political,' what, some political thing the Prime Minister afraid of you." I says, "What? It's not me the Prime Minister should be afraid of. The Prime Minister should..." The only thing I figured the Prime Minister should be afraid of me for is he should be afraid that I speak the truth. That's what I would say. That's the only fear the Prime Minister, that I will speak not the truth, you know, his truth. Because what I know in life is that no man knows what he will do when he hears his truth. So I hope the Prime Minister is listening, because tonight, he might hear his truth, and he doesn't know how he's going to behave when he hears his truth, okay? So the Prime Minister, there's no need to worry about my safety and fear of the Prime Minister. The thing about it is that, for me, I was a bit surprised, because and to understand it, I decided, "Let me do my own poll of the people in the St. Joseph constituency." Because I know, or I feel, I didn't know them, I just felt that the people in the St. Joseph constituency kind of love me, because I worked here for several years. I basically still live in the constituency. For the last fifteen years, since I came back as a specialist, every election day, they behind me to go and run for them, and I've been telling them, "No way, that's not my gig, I'm not interested." But they still ask me. And so that is why, when I decided to nominate myself, that is why I chose the St. Joseph constituency. I could have chosen anywhere else. I could have chosen Marigot, I could have chosen Rosemont, I could have chosen even Vicas if I wanted, because all I was doing was getting nominated. All you have to do is get six people to nominate. Six people living in the constituency, and you pay your $500, and you know you're going to lose it, because you know you're not going to be a candidate in no fake election or false election. So that is the reason why I ended up being nominated in St. Joseph. But because of all of what was happening, after I got nominated, I decided, "Let me do a poll to really see how St. Joseph people really feel about me and elections, and their elections, and whether they understand." Because I had realized by that time that I didn't understand much about elections anyway, because when I went to nominate, the amount of things I had to learn quickly to get nominated in twenty-four hours. I said, "But how ordinary people coping in that?" Because I realized you have to get six people in the constituency, you have to get $500, you have to read and write, you have to get all kinds of declarations, and I'm like, "So that's really what we have to do to get elected." And the worst thing, I realized that there is no space in this thing for independent people, for people who think independently, because they have more emblems for party that you're supposed to behave and do what they say, as opposed to independents. So that's why I realized this thing cannot, it can't be serious, because it really means you're supposed to do what your party say. Because if you have more emblems for parties than you have for independent people, the message is that it's not for independent people. So that's when I realized, but this thing is, this thing, do the people really understand what they're getting involved in? Because if I didn't understand, maybe they don't. So I did a little poll to find out, and I was shocked at the results of the poll. And if you look at the number of people out here tonight, that tells me that the people, all that talk about me in St. Joe, and people want me to go and run, that can't be true. Because we have a handful of people here for a town hall meeting that, and I figured the reason most people haven't come is because they're afraid to be seen, maybe, in a town hall meeting with me. Because if they say they love me so much, because from the poll, it is obvious that the St. Joseph people love me, so even if I was feeling it, I have evidence to support that. But interestingly, in the poll, fifty percent of the people who love me tell me, "Don't go in there." So, and the majority of the people who told me, "Don't go in there," are usually the old elderly people, when I looked at the results of the poll. That says, "Well, they're not..." And the thing is that, "That is wasting my time, I'm too good for that," and all that. These are the comments I got. So I have to say, "Well, why should I be going in there, and why should people be saying, encouraging me to go and campaign, that when the people who really care about me, as far as I'm concerned, are telling me they're not interested in that, they're not interested in voting, and tonight is a clear example of that, and definitely they're not interested in me going and take my good life and go and get myself involved in that." And I think it's reasons like that that will determine how I am. Because as one person told me was that, "Well, look at what voting do to scare it, and look at what voting did to Charles Savery, because these are people who voted in, and look at them today." And that's some of the reasons they told me, they don't want that to happen to me. So this is what I want to explain to people, that what I went up, what I went to do was to nominate myself for a specific purpose. And I don't call it independent candidate, I call it independent action. I acted independently. But when I realized what it means to be independently active, it almost, it also means, once you act independently, you then have to act how everybody else wants you to behave. So that's a difficulty for me, because I don't act how people want me to act. I act how I feel I should act, and I face the consequences. So I just can't consider me an independent candidate, because the process for becoming an independent candidate, I think, is corrupt just as much as the no reform. Because how you can tell me that somebody basically in Dominica who cannot read and write can become an independent candidate? Cannot become an independent candidate. But the people who cannot read and write have more sense than those who read and write. And how you can tell me that if you are insane, you cannot be an independent candidate, yet all of us insane? Because the way we behave, all of us are insane, some are just as more insane than others. And I can challenge anybody the same result. So for me, what I want to explain is that we have to be all insane, because we're doing the same thing all the time, we're electing a government all the time, we're not getting, we're getting the same result, and we're still electing it. And on the other hand, the government changing what it's doing all the time, including the Prime Minister. He changing the thing all the time, and he do expect the result to change. So he have to be insane too. So I think we have a problem in Dominica, because the majority of us are insane, all of us insane as far as I'm concerned, but some of us are more insane than theirs. I'm not buying into that thing about demon and demon. Look, if one person is a demon, all of us are demons, because all of us go to the same school, and all of us go to the same church, and all of us look at the same TV, and all of us subject to, all of us eat the same food. So if one person is a demon, all of us are demons. So I'm not into this demon business, and that's something I want to correct, because I sort of mentioned it when I was on the radio, and somebody pulled me up about it, and I think that is so. So I would say, maybe, instead of saying, "Demon, we should change the word," I make another recommendation, maybe we'll say insane. Okay? So that is my explanation to the people in St. Joseph, who I abuse their kindness by using the St. Joseph constituency to be nominated. So, but I hope they will understand why I did it. And I would like to open the floor for their quest, any questions they have to me, because this is not a press conference, this is a people's conference, you know? When they have the press conferences, they say, "Only the press can talk." So in my meeting, only the people can talk, the press doesn't ask me any question. The press haven't asked me any questions for a whole week. So in this session, I would really open the floor for the people from St. Joseph to ask me any questions they need me to clarify for them.
There are just two questions. I have the manager of DBS. Talking about he called you for an interview, and he was insulting. First of all, I don't know if that, if I don't respond this morning, until like five.
Oh, somebody said that?
That's what he has to say. I would want to prove that the need, were you disrespectful to him, or you're just mocking him? And the other thing, maybe not presently, but if you're going to advise maybe the same person that is insane, scary, is difficult insane to explain. I don't think my description of me. But if you're going to advise him, I'm scared. What do we advise, maybe not ten years ago, not five years ago, but presently, I don't know, clearly, I don't like to go.
Okay, well, I never even spoke. So... Well, I don't even know what's his name. What's his name? Manager of DBS?
Yes, it is true.
What I know happened is my phone rang, and somebody said, "I am so-and-so from DBS," and I just said, "I don't speak to DBS." That's all. If the person considered that, and it's all, "DBS, I don't speak to DBS, DBS is a piece of, not a human being." I cannot speak to, I cannot speak to this floor, I don't speak to DBS, because DBS has never spoken to me, so I don't speak to DBS. I don't know if that's insulting, but for anybody to see that as insulting, something, they must be insane too. On the second, oh yes, we have another question.
I have a minor question to you. See, that's what I'm indicating that we all are, we all are insane. Can you give me the definition and the description of insanity and ingenious?
And ingenious, well, ingenious, I cannot give you that definition, you'd have to Google it. Insanity, for the common man, basically, not for a doctor, but in our general knowledge, in our general education, I'm not going to use no fancy medical word. My definition of insanity for you is, is that, it's what is commonly referred to as, if you're doing the same thing all the time, and you expect a different result, that for me means you are insane.
And what do you believe in geniuses?
I don't believe in geniuses, I know I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yes, let me get that out of the question. I have to think about that one blessing, that's a hard question.
I just wanted to know if you're still running as an independent candidate.
No, I was never an independent candidate, that's what I said. I was nominated independently, I acted independently. There is no way, but the point I want to be clear of, there is, I can't even disappoint it that the people who care about me and love me would tolerate me putting up myself as an independent candidate in this sham election. Anybody who knows me. So that's why I came, because I think a lot of people were confused, because they know me, and they know what that involves, they know what it produces. So I think a lot of people were shocked by that, that I was actually doing that. But that's what I'm here to clarify, there is no way. Maybe, and I'll tell you straight up, even if they get a practice mass, like what we're just doing in St. Joseph, or said, say, two weeks before Carnival, and three weeks before Carnival, that's what I see that. So there's no way I could participate in that. And there's no way I could participate, now that I realize, even with the reform, the attachment that people give to voting as being something so holy and do, when it is already stacked against us. Because in the voting, in the system that they call democracy, that allows us to vote for people who represent us, there's supposed to be some other things happening before you vote to make sure your vote is not corrupt, for want of a better word. I don't like to use the word corrupt, because that means different things to different people. But for a vote to be sort of, let's say, put healthy, instead of unhealthy, I don't want to use corrupt. It's medicine I know, I know medicine, so I'll call healthy and unhealthy. There are three other things that's supposed to be happening before you vote. You're supposed to inform on issues related to your activity. So if you are fisherman, you should know something about what the people who you're voting for are going to do about fishing. So you're supposed to be informed. Then you're supposed to have what they call an independent judiciary. What do you mean by that? That's a fancy term. You're supposed to have judges and so that act without the influence of the politician or people with money. And then, thirdly, you're supposed to have what they call civil society. Civil society, all it means is people like, like at the road trip clubs, and the scouts, and all those things actively participating, people talking to people who into those things before they go to vote. So for me, personally, I don't have a problem with it, I am saying, but for me personally, even if we get the reform, not even if we get, when we get the reform that everybody wants now, I still not sure that I think that would clean, you know, like, I think not sure that would clean up this thing in a way, where you voting benefits the ordinary man that's voting. I still think it is stacked against him, because it's not only the reform of the voting that is needed by cleansing the list and giving ID cards and blah, blah, blah. Also, there needs to be some reform with the information people get. There needs to be some reform with, at least having judges and so, that we don't feel in the laps of the politician, and the police, and the lawyers, and all of them like that, they are independent. And if we don't feel they independent, it means that needs to be fixed too. So that would be, that is sort of part of how I see the thing.
Good, I have another question.
Yeah.
People are always in sex and we're not doing it, does it clear that they go to vote, because they don't want to vote, they go no more, they don't want to vote.
Okay. What do I, what do they, okay. Well, I hope I don't get in trouble again. No, I hope, oh, they want to vote me, but they don't have me to vote, so they have to go. They don't have me to vote. Simple. Simp, simple, simple. Everybody entitled to, no, 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 no. No, everybody's, no, no, okay. Everybody's entitled to what they want, me too, you know? You know what I want? So nobody asking me what I want, everybody telling me what they want, of me. What about what I want? Do you know what I want? I want to continue to enjoy taking care of people's ears, nose, and throat. That's what I want. I want to be able to go in my garden and plant my flowers, that's what I want. I really want nothing else.
No.
So people have a problem that want me to want something else. They want me to want what other people want. I don't want to be Prime Minister, I don't want to be President. Maybe if they really send me, I might consider it, but I don't want that. So all those who fear that I want that, so they must protect that from me, it's not necessary. And they have to take my word for it, they will never know whether I lie or not, but that's it. Now, to go back to your question. Okay, maybe I should leave that for the next question.
Okay, for you name, everybody, your name is on there, what do we do?
Okay, okay, alright. That answers that question. That helps me to answer that question. So that is why I am here, because, and that is why I want to show that this whole thing, can you imagine me going up as a candidate according to you all, though even, didn't even realize that I couldn't take off my name on the ballot after it was there? How can that be? So how are you participating in some, how I go to participate in something? I don't even understand, I don't even know, and that's for everybody else. So because, so that's, that's really and truly, because I didn't realize when I just decided, you know what, this is all I can do to protest last week, Friday, is to nominate myself, I didn't have a clue whether anybody else was going to nominate themselves. So I figured in my mind at the time, well, if it don't work, all I do is pull back my name. But the good thing, I didn't really keep my name. They didn't read the paper, they realized I didn't keep my name. Well, they'll have to go and check it now, but I didn't really keep my name. I smarter than that. The issue is that I did not know that I could not withdraw my name. So now my name is there, I realize I have posed a problem for the people in St. Joseph, who now thinking voting is holy. If they don't vote, like, they will die. Can you imagine? After voting, they, all of us living, you know? But we behaving right now, as if we, though some of us, as if we don't vote, we're going to die. So that's really tragic, so that's why I say we insane. Because we voting all the time, and we not dying, yet we behaving, as if, if we don't vote, we die. So I have to tell it as I see. So here is what I can do, because I made a mistake, and I figure I should try and help to correct it. And why I think it was more important for me to correct it, because I was in Marigot yesterday, and somebody came to me and says, "Really and truly don't." No, I'm not nominated in Marigot, so I have no responsibility to anybody voting in Marigot. Really and truly don't. What should I do? I don't know what to do. That is, that happened to me yesterday. That's why I got last night, I decided I must have a meeting today, because I'm thinking, how many people in St. Joseph in the same position? And that's what the question, what to do? Now, I can, I never tell people what. I can, I never tell people what to do, especially big people or so-called adult people. I can't tell you what to do, everybody's supposed to free to do what they want. What I can do is make some recommendations, especially because I go and put my name on the ballot box in Saint Joseph that I cannot take out now. Why, I put a name there, is that right, my, my name is IP, the name that's there is something else.
What's your name?
My name is IP, my name is Dr. IP Pascal. That's not what my parents gave me, but I have the right to name myself and I have the right to do anything else I wanted myself. So, so all I can say to all the troubled people who don't know what to do, I think, if they don't know what to do is because they sense that something is wrong with voting in the snap election. Because otherwise, they wouldn't, they would know what to do. And all I can do is say what I do when I don't know what to do. And what I do when I don't know what to do is I either don't do it, or I go and find out why I should do. And in this case, if that still doesn't help, I think anybody who wants, who say they going to vote, because my name is on the ballot box, because they so want to vote for Dr. Pascal. If I was in their position, this is what I would do, two choices. We always have two choices in life, you do or you don't do. So, I'm going to give two choices, two options. If I was in a position of the place, if I was in the place of somebody who didn't know what to do in this situation that we in Dominica now, and I really wanted to vote, I would not participate in the election, I would not vote. Or, if I was in a sort of rebellious mood and I really wanted to make a point, I would go into the polling station and in the privacy and the security of the polling station, write no reform on the ballot. That's what I would do. Those who cannot write, because we want to discriminate against those who cannot write. They tell those who cannot write to make a X. A X is already, as far as I'm concerned, wrong to make, to do wrong. Because, so I would say make a big X and leave it at that.
Or make a what?
Or make, well, that's what I'm saying, I just say what I would do, I wouldn't make no why. I even get a bonus, because I give you three choices, I didn't even think about it at the beginning. But, those, that's my advice. Now, that's my, that's what I would do, I not advise telling anybody what to do. I am just saying, this is what I would do if I was in the position of the people who have been so caught up with this voting thing that really doesn't benefit them. Because we all can see what this voting thing has brought us over the last twenty years. So, how we participating in something and expecting a different result, and it's the same something we party, so we must, that's why I say, all of us insane. And we need to fix that insanity. So, we start, we need to start to doing things differently to get a different result. So, if all of us decide we will take one of my three options, we will get a different result after December sixth. Well, I shouldn't say we will. We might get the result we want, but none of us know the future. So, none of us know what will be the result of our actions, the same way I didn't know the result of being nominated would have got me in all this hot water, where those who used to like me do like me no more, and those who never used to like me love me now, that kind of. I, that is hot water, and all I want to do is continue to enjoy my life, which is taking care of people's ears, nose and throat, as long as I have life, and going in my Zion and check my vibes. Any other question, no press questions from the press after we talk to the press, this is for the people, I'm not speaking to no press. Sorry, I, I don't mean to be so, ah, no, honestly, when I came here, I already came here saying I wanted to hear the questions from the people. I will answer any questions from the press after I've finished with the people. Is that okay? Can you wait a couple minutes? Alright, thanks. Any other question?
I'd like to rephrase my question.
Which one? Oh, the one you asked me, no, no, why you rephrase it, to make it more difficult?
No, no, not necessarily to be the option.
Okay, thanks.
If, based on the complexity
Uh-huh.
of the world mentally or whatever, it is mischievously or whatever, would you choose to advise him knowing he's going to disregard your advice? Or would you take the option of, you know, advising him, knowing his presence fee?
Oh, blessings, you, you. This is not Q ninety-five. It's only on Q ninety-five you're allowed to ask anything difficult. And I reserve the right, this is my meeting, I reserve the right to answer or not answer. Is it not okay if I don't answer, no?
Yes, no problem.
No, sorry, sorry. No, in all honesty, if I had to advise Mr. Skerritt, who is Prime Minister right now, well, I have a difficulty there, because there's no advice I have given Mr. Skerritt in the last twenty years that he's listened to. So, your, your point is valid, at least that I'm aware of. To the extent where the last time I advised Mr. Skerritt publicly, I was threatened in the parliament with getting my backside fixed. So, I don't even know whether I should do it again, but because the people have asked me to do it, I will give my advice to Mr. Skerritt.
And it's up to you.
Uh, it's up to him, you know, I hope he doesn't feel the need to threaten me again for giving public advice, but the, I would say, and that is not for only for Mr. Skerritt, I think, um, the advice I give Mr. Skerritt to the government, the people at the government, so it's not just for Mr. Skerritt, I think we need to, including Mr. Skerritt, see a psychiatrist. So, that's the advice I would give him, genuinely from my heart, as a physician, based on what I have seen, based on what has happened over the last couple of days since the snap, snap, snap. I think there's been snapping all around. So, he, there might have been some snapping, so that's what I would advise, that's one. And secondly, I would appeal to whatever little humanity he has left and love for Dominica, that he would consider it the best thing he can do for Dominica is just say, well, I've had enough of that. Step down, fix all your, fix all your business, because apparently I'm not fixing it good enough for you all. So, that'd be my advice, Mr. Skerritt. Any other questions? If you not, we'll take questions now from the press, we only have two members of the press, both, yeah.
Yes, you may have mentioned that, um, the reform will come, but look at this state of the country and mentality of individuals. Because it appears apparent to me that all that, because Dominicans right now are studying is C one fuller. And it's, it's a sad state of affairs, so many young persons living in Dominica. Um, you may mention regarding, um, debates and the like. And I feel that we need a change of mentality in the country. And I support your, 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 your advice.
You support my advice?
See a psych- psychiatrist, because
All of them.
It's a mind thing, and I believe for years, mind games is what it has been played. And pitting one against the other, and party politics, um, causing them to see colors rather than see
People.
Individuals, people, Dominicans. Um, so, based on those things, do you think that electoral reform and not only electoral reform, but it would process, even up to vote where one cast their ballot, because that is basically the last thing that has to be done. It would process of, of, of elections.
Of voting, or not elections, voting.
Voting is more, a much deeper process, where you consider issues that are affecting different person within the, the, the society. Um, because for me, voting is minimal.
That's the point.
You know, my concern is, how are you going to, um, sustain the opportunity of the, of the country, the economy, of the people, so that we can be free and liberated and enjoy our life while we're here? So, do you think, based on those things, that anytime soon there will be reform?
Well, I can think what I want, I don't know the future, that's all I'll tell you, so I'll tell you what I think. But I would just add one little thing, so that is what I feel, it doesn't mean it will happen or not happen. What I would say to that is that reform is really about change. Reform is all, that's what it is, it's just a fancy word for change. That's all the people asking for change, to heal their craziness. Because I said, if you're not changing and you expect a different, different results, you're crazy. So, reform is just a fancy word for change. But, to my mind, change is happening all the time. So, if I re- re- if I remove the word reform and I put change, yeah, of course I think you'll get reform. That's it, it's simple as that. So many things we reform, we reform constitution, we reform the church, we reform the Catholic Church, we appendicose, lay, um, medities of, we reform all, if you can reform the church, is a little voting process we cannot reform? And I can guarantee you, if everybody that wants to vote and feel it is holy to vote, vote on my advice, we will get change and we will get reform. So, that's the best way I can answer. So, fret not yourself. Change is a must, so reform is a must. Any other questions? Yes, blessings. Last one, blessings. This is not Q ninety-five.
The best, I mean, we know the government that's gone rogue, from my perspective, right? I think it's the government that's gone rogue. But what is your British concern having to do with the political landscape and the way the people, the same thing playing like voting is secret, and they have to participate, they like die if they don't? What is your British concern having to do with the future of the young people particularly? Based on that trend of politics and cannibalism and tribalism and all that?
Well, my
What is your British concern?
My greatest concern is the is the extent to which the people, or all of us, live our daily lives, following what somebody has said we should do, rather than what our hearts tells us to do. That is my greatest concern. And as you said, young people there, I want to go back to something somebody said about, um, the sea war and all of that with the voting, and as if that is something so wrong with that. My point is that that has always been happening. It's not, that's the point, nothing has changed and we expect a different result. Because, what the, the young people are a little smarter than you're thinking. Because, the way I look at this voting thing is that you used to get the cool out after the vote. Because when you vote and your party win, what you get? Better schools, better roads, more scholarship, so that was the cool out. But the young people now, they want it now, and they don't trust the politician. Because they make promises they don't keep. So, the young people smarter than you all, they taking the cool out. They benefit before, because they don't trust the politician. Because they can take the cool out and still go in the ballot box and don't vote for the politician. So, this thing all you have about judging the young people without knowing what going on in their minds, is part of the insanity I talking about. Because the cool outs are always going on, it's just that you wasn't getting it individually, and you was getting it after the election. But it's the same by the Obama in us. So, let's face it, in my view, and I think that is reality, and you know, I kinda disappointed with the older people. Because, I, I, I don't understand how like all them people that, um, in them six constituencies that not going to have any voting or any elected representative, when in a democracy, you must have elected representative. So, in those six constituencies that already have, that is a dictatorship that's on there. Now, so, and even when you look at, even those people going to vote and not take my advice, they voting for a dictatorship. Because that is what we have. So, all who say they voting, as if voting is so holy, is they voting for a dictatorship in my view. But, going back to this thing about cool out, the way I see, and I have a right to see things, or my heart tells me to see it and say it as I see, is that I am kinda, well, as Lucy Douglas used to say, he doesn't get disappointed, because he don't appoint nobody, so. So, when I say disappointed, it don't means I figure I appoint any of you all. But, I am kinda disappointed with people who don't realize they're not going to get no cool out, neither before the election or after the election, because the election already calling their places. And then I am amazed that people where the cool out still going on, because I figure I bring some cool out to train to Saint Joe, because, because I going up, the hair I going up, you see how much activity all you have in Saint Joe? So, instead of exploiting that, it's games they playing. So, how come people don't understand, that's what bothers me, you ask me what bothers me? How come people don't understand that it's, at the end of the day, it's a game? So, somebody want to buy your vote, just the same way they want to buy your lettuce or so, you trying to get the most for it? If you're going to sell it anyway? Because you already decide to sell it. So, how you selling it for the lowest amount? And then when you come in my office, you want to tell me why my, what they call it, my fee so high? Doctor charging all that for a visit? So, that is my problem. Okay, so, that is, that's why I'm saying for me, I say we kinda insane. And all of us knew that. So, that's why I call this a little healing we doing here right now.
It's like the, eh, the, the thing called experience, it's a great teacher, you know? Because first it gives the test and then it teaches the lesson, you get what I'm saying? First of all, we come, the Prime Minister come with, um, we be going to give, um, um, primary preschoolers free education.
Yeah.
Free education for preschoolers from the age of two to five, I would say.
Hmm.
Three to five or two to five.
Yeah.
Now, when you take children from two to five and give them free education, where you give their parents jobs to, to pay all the fees for them to go to school, whether it's a private school or a public school. What, what is going to happen?
Yes, but, but that's another example of what I say. All the parents that accept that they insane. How, how you go have your children to educate? And you will sit there knowing who you dealing with? And allow them to even come close to your children? So, and the same people are calling the Prime Minister, say crazy, but if you look at it, I can't say they not crazy. Well, you see, that's the problem. Next, last question, what time it is? Any other question? Yeah.
If I recall, I remember you saying that the reason why you would nominate is for you to get more time. Otherwise, you didn't want to go to a scary to be the Prime Minister Friday night.
Yes.
So, you want to push back the election, so you can get more
No, I didn't want to push back no elections, I wanted to make sure last week Friday, just be clear on that.
Yes, 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 I understand.
And as far as I concerned, I succeeded.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you said that was to get a solution before the sixth of December.
Hmm, no, I, no.
We could have enough time
Yeah.
to come up with a solution.
Right.
To stop the election before this-
Well, no, I never use the word stop. To do what you all can do. Because don't forget, it's not me that won that election, you know? That's what I said, if you go back and you listen to the same, so that the people can really understand and decide and under, get a little more time to do, because don't for, remember it's a snap election, like it break your neck. So your neck hanging on a side, you need to straighten it to decide what you doing. So that is basically, so now for me, I was, that's why I was surprised that everybody was looking for me to do, no, I had said what everybody's supposed to do, sit down and think about what they can do. To... Not even to, it's not to stop election, it's to decide what you do with somebody who promising you, promising you, promising and not delivering on the promise. And whether you're going to put them in a position to continue to promise you, promise you, promise you. No delivery. And you don't think you crazy? So that is where my responsibility ended. Except because I didn't see what so I, I ended up having another responsibility, which is to come here tonight and explain my situation. I don't ne- I don't normally go around trying to get forgiveness or people don't understand why I do what I do, I don't do that. I do what I want all the time, I don't ask nobody no question. After I do it, I don't have to come and explain. But this situation is a little snap of my neck, so I change things a little bit. Okay? Okay, Bernie, I hope you understand. It's up to you, it's up to all of you all to decide what you all do, and I give you all some easy suggestions, you know, I mean?
Yeah.
Do what you all done.
But it's a serious, serious, serious-
Okay. You all want to hear the question the press asking, or you all want that one-on-one?
Yeah.
You all allow you then to ask me any question? How all week, none of them ask me any questions, you know? Something called DBS, try to ask me a question. Sorry.
Dr. Pascal, your message is even is for the people to not vote and, um, vote, and if they do, to show their disapproval of what you're stating.
No? Okay, go ahead.
What if the people of the Saint Joseph constituency, they decide that the way they would like to show their disapproval to the President Administration is to actually vote you in? And you're getting a vote on your parliamentary, or a non-sensible parliamentary representative that evening, such as you like, but what is the next one, Dr. Pascal?
But, no, 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 no. You didn't, no, you did not listen to me.
I listened, but I-
I said that is a want of theirs. That's a want, everybody's entire go to their wants. I said, but I replied to that, I said, my wants are not equivalent to their wants. It's as simple as that, at least at this point in time. Especially if it has to do with anything called an election on December 6th. The people cannot negotiate, don't have the luxury to negotiate with me on that. If they fix it, if they get a little electoral reform and sanitize the mess a little bit, I would consider it. But at this point in time, the people need to fix that. If they want me to participate in that, simple as that.
I can recall hearing you make that strong appeal for independent candidates to step up to, um, not the night of, to not ensure that Prime Minister got the 21st seat. It seems like, um, others, they may have the heat to your call and the independence candidate, they stood up. But right now we see that there are independent candidates who are actually, um, campaigning and they're urging the exact opposite of what you're saying. What would be your message as an, um, what you said, don't pull your independent candidate, but once he's nominated, what would be your message to the others who are also nominated, what would you say to them?
Well, I would say, like I say to myself, follow your heart. If you feel comfortable doing that, that's what you should do, that's what every man should do. Every man or woman should just do what in their conscience they think is right and face the consequences. It's as simple as that. So that's why I'm here now, being grilled by you, I facing the consequences of what I did. So, no, but I cannot, I don't tell people, if they come and ask me for advice, then I might give them their, my advice, but I don't think it's my place to even tell them what they should do. Because I give everybody the right to do what they think. To be free, that's what freedom is, the right to, to and say and be who you want to be. So because I want that for myself, I give it to everybody else. Unless you ask me for my advice, like the lady a while ago who asked me, what advice would I give? For the people who tormented us to what they should do. But if you don't ask me for my advice, why should I give it to you? You don't see me going on the road and going and tell people, "Your hair is bad, come and fix it." I wait for Dick come and ask me for advice, what I should do about the bad hair, so that's how I operate. That's who I am.
What are your, um, recommendations, of course, of my justice address with the, um, with the nomination? Dr. Pascal, is there any other thing that, um, anything else you believe that the nation can do to, um, I know that the ERC has written to the, to the President, have meeting with him. From your perspective, is there anything that really, um, that can be done at this moment? Um, so that on December 6th, the current, the current regime, they're in order to elect today to office any recommendation, anything? Or do you believe-
Well, I, I would say I, I have done more on my fair share. And I think every individual Dominicans need to consider the options I have proposed and follow their heart and see what they want to do about it, that's the only other thing I see that can be done. Unless from somewhere, somebody comes up with some other genius plan to maybe lock down the country for another forty days.
Amen.
But that would have to be, the people would have to be wanting, motivated to do that. And, um, by the turnout I see here tonight, I'm not convinced that that is so. I think the people are so scared to act that they will not even do that, but I think uh, I've given us an easier and simpler solution. Either you don't participate or if you participate, write "No Reform" on the ballot. I hope it's not illegal to say that, but that's my advice, illegal or not.
There is not Q95.
There is not Q95, I, I haven't got, but no disclaimer. No disclaimer, no worry for Q95.
You're right.
Thank you very much. I had a little music, but the, the other the other people was making so much noise, we couldn't play it, so I will have to hold it for the next time.
No, please, no.
Play it now, but I don't have, no CEO, I'm not in the-
You're not a CEO of your own?
No, I, 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 right now, I, now is not time for, for the music. The music was supposed to happen before we started. And, um-
My next time, no.
Next time? Fix the, fix the thing and next time, we have a CEO. Alright, thank you very much.
I want to know if you in the race or if you not in the race.
Which race? Which race? Which race?
Which race?
What, so you, you need to come and check your hair?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You mean all night? I've been speaking for whole, okay, well, let me see if I can answer. Let, let me answer, let me answer. My life is not a race. I, my life is not a race. So all I am doing here is living my life, I am not in any race. Okay, because race beating you running, right? I only walk in one step at a time. Okay?
And you have a quote, Tom Hall meeting with Dr. Obi Pascal, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much.